Everybody.
Hello.
All right.
Saul.
Good evening and welcome to the special City of Pasco council meeting tonight. The council thanks you for being part of our city government.
Thank you, and I'll try this one more time, and good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco special council meeting, and the council thanks you for being a part of the city government. An agenda packet is available on the city's Pasco's website at www.pasco.wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings are temporarily being held remotely and are accessible through GoToWebinar. These virtual meetings will continue through April and may be extended if need be. This directive was issued on March 23rd by Governor Inslee and was clarified by the Governor's Proclamation Number 20-28 that made temporary changes to the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting is being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This meeting is also live via the GoToWebinar link on the agenda. And lastly, for those individuals listening in, may submit their comments and or questions for items not on the agenda via GoToWebinar, the City of Pasco's Facebook page, or emailing the city manager directly. So with that, the next thing is, is a roll call. So would you please, please start with the roll call, please?
Mr. Alvarado.
President.
Ms. Barajas. Ms. Barajas. Mr. Maloney.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Mar- or Mayor Martinez.
Present.
Mr. Milney.
Present.
Ms. Roach.
Present.
Mr. Serrano.
Here.
Seven accounted for, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I will go ahead and rise in for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Wanted to just remind everybody that here at City Hall, we're still using our masks, and we have our cleansers and our cleaning, Lysol cleaning and disinfectants, and we had it cleaned up before we got started today, so just trying to take every precautions that we can as we move forward with this order from the governor. So next, I'm gonna open up a hearing, and the hearing, give me a second here. Before opening up the public hearing, I will ask Rick White to provide a brief report related to the topic. Rick, are you on?
I am, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The purpose of this special meeting tonight is to get council approval for a series of actions that staff will use in order to distribute CDBG Carers funding related to the COVID-19 health emergency, and hopefully to distribute accumulated home consortium funds. So there's three actions on tonight's agenda. The first would be to revise the funding approval that council developed this past year to the 2020 home allocation. The next action would be to amend the 2019 annual work plan to add the CDBG Carers funding to our allocation. And the next action would be to amend the citizen participation plan to reduce the 30-day comment period to a total of five days in order to more effectively and more easily get the money out upon the streets. Staff is proposing, in conjunction with Kennewick and Richland, to use the funding from CDBG Carers, $434,000 approximately, to provide rent and utility assistance to small businesses, and to use the accumulated home funds to do the same for low to moderate income residential families. So rent and utility assistance for low to moderate income families here in Pasco. Essentially, Mr. Mayor and council, the program will use a subrecipient, so we do not have to create a new program, which HUD has cautioned against, in order to distribute the money. Well, first, in order to screen the applications, and then later to distribute and account for the money. In our case, we'll either be using CAC, which has an existing program, identical to the two I just described for rent and utility assistance, and they have the capacity in order to assist us with this, provided we make a small software purchase to provide initial screening of the applicants. That's a fairly quick summary. It does provide, though, the opportunity for city staff to participate with CAC and get a little bit less than $1 million out to where it's needed for small businesses and residential households. And there may certainly be some questions, and I'd be happy to try to answer those as I am able.
All right. Well, thank, thank you much, Mr. White. I would like to, at this time, like to address the council. Does the council have any questions before I open the hearing?
I do have some questions, but I can reserve them until the hearing's underway, if that's preferred.
Well, what will happen is that there will be public comment, and then I will, I will close the hearing, and then you could provide some more comment if you would like.
Okay. Perfect.
But, but before I open the hearing, if you, if you want to wait till afterwards, that's fine?
Um, I'll, I'll hold it. It's, I don't think it's a game changer, just a couple of quick questions. Well, I guess, you know, the first one, let me ask, because it could be. I was reading a memorandum from the state attorney general that discussed gift of public funds. It was dated April 6th of this year. I suspect we've looked at this in relation to that memorandum. Is that correct? That's probably for Mr. Ferguson or Rick?
Yes, Councilman Serrano, that is correct, and as long as the issues we're trying to address with the funding are related to the health emergency, we're on solid ground.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that they continually drew back to the statutory language or the constitutional language of foreign and firm, and it was pretty outright, like a bright line rule. It seemed appropriate for residences, but it was questionable for business. I just wanted to make sure that we felt comfortable with that. So as long as we've vetted that, that's, that's really all I needed, was a thumbs up. I figured you would have, but gotta check. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Any other questions from the council before we open the hearing?
Yeah, this is Councilman Milney. I had a quick question for Rick White. I was curious, how are the businesses in, like, downtown Pasco gonna find out about this? I mean, it's, how are we gonna advertise about the funds become, when they can become available?
Well, we've already done that, and through the DPDA, and as a matter of fact, as part of the public process that Mr. Mayor Martinez is about to open up, I do have a handful of letters of support from downtown businesses that I would, I need to read into the record because of the nature of the closed record or the remote meeting being held tonight.
Okay.
This is Councilwoman Roach, and I have one question. And is that the, is, are these funds available to any business owner in Pasco? Or is there something that would, like, would citizenship status exclude people from, from being able to qualify for these?
Not from our end, certainly not. We're, we're looking at whether they are a bona fide business, whether they're an existing business, and whether they are of a nonessential nature, which are particularly impacted by the health crisis.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Any, any other questions from the council? If not, the public hearing is, well, I'm gonna open up the hearing at this moment. So with that, is there, I know we have, is, did Mr. Gustavo, did he get on the line?
He's on.
Okay, so I understand we have Mr. Gustavo Gutierrez Gomez, who's on the line. Are you there, Mr. Gomez?
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes, there you go. We know you had some muting issues there, but we can hear you now, Mr. Gomez. Go ahead.
Perfect. Well, you know, we, at DPDA, we represent a lot of the business owners in downtown, and they basically, micro corporations, they're very small business. So I have a list of people, and I'm gonna read it, for the record. Manuel A. Campos Avila. We have Veronica Ramirez. We have Alicia Valencia. We have El Bronco and La Bakerita. Those are some of them, that they actually, some of the business owners, and they came the other day to talk to me about some of their needs. And then I have some, I have a picture, and I don't think you can see my camera, but I have a picture, and then I have some emails. And basically, I can tell you a little bit of what is on the emails. What basically they're saying is that, as everybody knows, COVID-19, there's new guidelines from the government. They were shutdowns, some of these businesses. And basically, what they're saying is that they have lost money, not only on the sales, but also on the season. It's, it's a lot of these businesses run by seasonality, like, it's a lot of fashion, you know, and they go with the school district. Some of them also go with the events, you know, through Cinco de Mayo and other events, either at the beginning of the spring or the week, I mean, or the summer. So they lost money on sales. They lost money on merchandise, because it's outdated now. You know, the season already passed. And they also explained to me that a lot of them are, they're business owners, but they're also employees themselves. They don't have a lot of employees, so they, small organizations that, they have, like, small boutiques, so they basically are employees themselves. So what they were proposing was, and I have the letters with me, what they're proposing was, if, if there's a way that these funds, first of all, if we can break barriers of access to the funds, and then if it could be, instead of, if they could be grants, instead of loans. And if, if there will be loans, then hopefully a very low, low interest. And the other piece is the amount of money. They would like to have more than $20,000 if possible, because they're talking about two to three months of losses. And the losses they incur is not only in the expenses for, you know, gas, electricity, and operations, but because they support themselves with these businesses, they also haven't been able to pay, like, their own rent, their own cars, you know, because they haven't have a net profit. So basically, that's, that's, in, you know, in, in a nutshell, that's what it is. That's what I have heard from, from a few of them, and I have the letters, and I can submit after this meeting for, from six of them. And they're basically all kind of saying the same thing. They want more than, because some people were, were saying $10,000, but they would like to see more than $10,000, depends on their needs. Someone actually, they, they, they have different ranges between $10,000, $15,000, and $25,000. So if there's a way that we can do three brackets, $10,000, $15,000, and $25,000, or $20,000, that would be great. Oh, by the way, one of them already closed down. La Chica Dorada, it's a boutique store by your street. And they already, they already shut down because they couldn't pay their rent. So it's one of them that is already closed down. And that's just testimony from the downtown. I can tell you, we are a nonprofit, DPDA, and we also have suffered the loss of a couple of businesses. Boricua is no longer with us. Deli Cakes might be leaving, and also Chow Wagon. We have 22 clients, and we couldn't charge rent in April because of the lost sales. So we also suffering from the same situation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Thank you, I appreciate.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Gabriel, Portugal. Just wanted to add a couple of notes here. So when the, when the process for the funds is set, I was wondering if it's gonna be like an application format, so that we can look at, if they have that in Spanish, and then maybe just focus on how the DPDA is gonna actually be able to, to help or to be somehow connecting with those businesses, so that we can help the Spanish translation, whatever is needed. So that was just the thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Portugal. Appreciate you coming in. Didn't really realize you were on the line, but thank you for, for speaking up. So that was Mr. Gomez and Mr. Portugal that had provided comments. Is there, I don't believe we have anybody else other than Mr. White. Did you, you have to share something for the record?
I, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll do as best I can with these to make sure that they're understandable, and I hope I pronounce everyone's name correctly. As Gustavo mentioned, Gabriela Dominguez from La Chica Dorada Boutique, they are already closed, but a few days ago, they did submit, actually, it was today, they submitted a letter that said, "My store, the empty building, now after 12 years in business, I'm trying to come back." So that's the extent of their public comment, and they're, it's not addressed on the email, but their physical street address is 514 Clark. The next comment is from Luisa Cervantes. Their address is 208 North Fourth Avenue. "Hello, good afternoon. Could I apply for help to continue opening my store since as soon as winter was over and this pandemic arrived, it came to harm everyone, and we in small businesses were affected as well? And if I were eligible for the help they are going to give, I would use some money to pay rent, electricity, water, insurance, internet, telephone, and business expenses, since it would be very helpful not to close my business. Thank you very much, Luisa Cervantes, 208 North Fourth Avenue." The next letter is from Miguel Angelo, owner of Mikasa Furniture. I don't see an address listed here, but I think we all know where that business is. It's on the southeast corner of Fourth and Lewis. "Good day, everyone. I really wish that all of you could get out of these times without repercussions in your daily life. Some of you may be financially insulated from this pandemic because of your jobs, parentheses, especially government. Give you money and health benefits that we small businesses do not have. We are on a dead-end street where surviving might not be an option. It is a harsh reality for us, since we do not have anyone to help us. Here at Mikasa, we have had a lot of lost sales, approximately $40,000, since the start of the pandemic, and yet we keep our employees working, albeit with fewer hours. Even though we are not open, we are busy doing deep cleaning and maintenance throughout the building and floors. Of course, we keep our personal space, parentheses, social distance between us. But the utility bills keep coming, and the mortgage expenses have to be paid as well as the insurance of all the vehicles, approximately $6,500, as well as a payroll of the employees, approximately $11,000 per month. Sometimes the government makes low-interest loans and gives grants to small businesses. The problem is that it is us, the small Hispanic businesses, that are ignored on purpose or by design, or perhaps we do not have adequate information on how to apply for these loans slash grants, and therefore, we lag behind these benefits. I'm not blaming anyone, just that this is my feeling. Apologies. I want to apply to be taken into account for a low-interest loan or grant for $25,000 to continue operating for at least two more months as a merchant in downtown Pasco. With much love and respect for all of you, I wish you good health and well-being in these times of incentive. Miguel Angelo, owner of Mikasa Furniture." A very short letter from Anna Varela, 126 North Fourth Avenue. "Dear DPDA, my name is Anna Varela, and I'm the owner of a clothing store called La Bonita, located in downtown Pasco. I have been in this business for six years, but due to COVID-19, I have had to close. I would like the money contributed to the city, parentheses, CDBG funds, to be used to benefit the smallest businesses, as we all need it to survive and resist this pandemic. I understand that all businesses are having a hard time, but I would like you to consider that nonessential businesses like mine are being affected even more than businesses in other industries such as food. We are trying to stay in business, but we need help to maintain good use of the resources granted to my small business. My recommendation is that the following requirements are followed. Number one, be active for at least one year in business, and number two, be critically affected or completely closed due to COVID-19. A suggestion to really make a positive impact on the conservation of local businesses is to grant a scholarship of $10,000 to $15,000. We don't know even when we will reopen, and even af- even after we open, we know that businesses is most likely to be slow. This is why I suggest a scholarship and not a loan. Thank you very much for your time and consideration from me and the other businesses located in Pasco City Center. We guarantee that any help will be beneficial." Then there was a Spanish version of that same letter. This is a letter from Mariela Prada, owner of Shoe Love at 516 and a half West Clark Street. "I am writing this email, hoping I can get some help to relieve the stress this situation is causing. I'm a sole proprietor. I don't have any employees, but I do have utilities, utility bills to pay fees and rent. I understand that the grant is for all businesses, and I would really like to be considered to get some funds to help my business to survive this crisis. Thank you, Mariela." This is from Rosa Galavie, Glades, sorry, excuse me. "Hello, we were affected," I'm sorry, their address is 516 West Clark. "Hello, we were affected by the COVID-19 right now, and our business is currently closed, and we're struggling with the payments and still pay bills like water, garbage, and utilities. Our business consists in women's retail. We also have two units that belong to us for rent next to us, and one of them is no longer in business nor occupied. The person who used to rent left for the fear of not making it financially because of COVID-19, and that hurts us financially as well, due to the fact that she was one of my renters. The other person who is still occupying one unit has not paid any rent since her business is closed as well, and probably won't be able to pay anytime soon. She said she has no money to pay, especially if we don't have businesses, that then equals no money to pay rent. I was told to send an email in hopes that you guys might be able to help small businesses in my area that are all struggling. My name is Rosa Galavie, and my husband's name is Juan. We are the owners of Gale Express, which is located at 516 West Clark. I hope to hear from you, and thank you for your time." And we had a letter, puzzling letter, from the program manager for Futurewise that asked a series of questions. "Dear Ms. Pittman, I'm writing in response to the City of Pasco announcement for funds for eligible activities meeting a national objective to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. I know you are seeking public comment, and it would be helpful if we had a, some idea of eligible activity, activities that will be considered. Does it have to be an existing nonprofit? Does it have to be in a certain geographical location? Does it have to serve a particular portion of the community, et cetera? I know that places serving the homeless and seniors are particularly stressed right now. Perhaps those are the types of general comments you are looking for, question mark. Thank you, Allison Cable, Tri-City Program Manager, Futurewise." And that's the extent of the written comments received, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your patience with that.
Thank you, Mr. White. And due to the, to the nature of the meeting and the people online, I don't believe there's anyone else, but I'll just give it a quick five seconds. Is there anyone else that would speak to this item during this open hearing? And normally, there'd be a second and third call, but in this case, we will not need that. So with that, I'm going to close the hearing. Close the hearing? The hearing is now closed. So with that, I would ask the council if they have any comments and/or if anyone would like to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Maloney. I have a couple of questions for Mr. White.
Okay, Mr. Maloney, go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. White, could you, I guess I'm a little unclear on, on exactly how this process will end up working, especially for the small business grants, and it sounded like there's a lot of confusion and questions out from the, from the public comment as well. Could you please just kind of walk us through how, say, a small business in downtown would apply? And then kind of what sort of criteria would be used for, for determining who gets what, how much money?
Yeah, I'll try my best, Mr. Maloney, and, and some of the guidelines are, are being developed as we speak right now from both HUD National and HUD Regional, so we're, we're, we may be a little short on specific details regarding the guidelines. But essentially, we're proposing to use a software program here at the city specifically designed for this kind of application. We anticipate that it would be need-based, not necessarily have a maximum loan amount. And I use loan, I apologize for that, I meant grant, a maximum grant amount, so it would be a forgivable grant. The application would be made. We would refer them to our subrecipient. We would enter into a subrecipient agreement, just like we do with a regular block grant program, most likely with CAC, because they have both the experience, knowledge, and capacity to provide the kind of screening and follow-up that would be necessary for the program. And then the, the, it's on, the funds are on a reimbursable basis, so we're going to have to put the money out front, and then they would be, HUD would be reimbursing us depending on the submittal schedule that the guidelines entail.
So Mr. White would, so CAC will ultimately be making the decision if there are a number of grant applications above and beyond the amount of available funds?
Well, I, I can almost guarantee that there are going to be more applications than funding. I just did a quick, quick math operation as we were waiting for the meeting to begin, and if we had, for example, $434,000 and we made $25,000 grants, we would have 17 grants out there, and that would be the extent of the CDBG Carers money. So yes, it's entirely predictable and probable that we're going to run out of money prior to running out of applications.
So following up on that, I guess what I'm trying to understand is ultimately, there will be people who will be chosen and will receive some of the grant money, and some people who will obviously not. Just the nature of the limited resources. So how do we, who is gonna be setting the criteria, and how do we help influence that to make sure that the most vulnerable in our community get that? Do we have that capability, or will this end up being first come, first served? This, this, you understand the picture of what I'm trying to get at. How will this mechanically work?
Well, I, I think it would be not necessarily first come, first served, but first come, first eligible. And depending on the final guidelines, the, the city will be making that decision. It won't necessarily be CAC. I think the key, though, is to get eligible applicants in the door as opposed to applicants really quickly. And I know that I'm a little nebulous on a lot of this, but right now, we're, we're still kind of confused on our own end with some of the guidelines or lack of guidelines that we need to operate the program.
Absolutely understand. I appreciate you trying to add whatever clarity you can, Mr. White. I know this is a topic, I'm certainly interested in, I'm positive the rest of our council and others in the community. I have no further questions or comments about the matter directly in front of us right now, but I'd be very interested in, as we go along, to continue to get status updates and potentially provide feedback into what this process might look like.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, that's all I have.
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question about, you know, for folks who may be watching or maybe looking back at this meeting, I don't know if it's clear to folks how to access or how to get more information. So what would be the best point of contact if somebody were to, like, I want to be a part of this and make sure I'm not, do we have that well published on our website, or can we say that here?
Well, Mr. Alvarado, we don't right now, but we will as soon as the program is approved, and they'll be contacting us here at City Hall, CDBG staff.
Perfect, so just call City Hall, ask for CDBG staff.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Director White, this is Councilwoman Blanch. I have some follow-up questions regarding what Mr. Maloney mentioned. More, pretty much more to follow up on his questions regarding how you determine who's eligible. I'm getting comments that a lot of people did not get the information, a lot of people did not know they could apply. Is there a closing date to apply for these funds? And again, it's just the criteria and how someone is chosen, but there's a lot of confusion out there, so is there a closing date to apply?
No, there is not, and as we still have not yet opened the program, so there's no closing date, and I don't anticipate there being one. Again, based on the amount of eligible applicants we receive, I think that will provide, quote, its own closing date, because we're going to run out of funds at some points, and at that point, unless we refurnish the account, we'll be closed.
Perfect, thank you for the response. So just to follow up for those individuals that are listening, please call City Hall and ask for who again, Director White, so that they could apply.
If they simply say the block grant program will get them to the right people, and I hope Gustavo is still on the line, that he may also be getting a number of questions or comments from people, and he's done a fine job of referring them over here, so I assume that will continue.
Perfect, sounds great.
Well, thank you very much. Any other council members with any questions before we move, go to a motion? I would just like to say real quick, I appreciate, Mr. White, the work you put into this, and my heart goes out to those businesses that are struggling like this, you know, never saw it coming. I just hope that they can hold on, and hopefully they can get the assistance and the aid that they need to maintain their business. Again, we're very sensitive to, you know, these are people's livelihood, and people work their whole lives to start their business only to be confronting this situation, so, you know, we're hoping to do the best we can and get these funds out as soon as possible. So with that, Councilwoman Barajas, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely, we have three motions here. Motion number one, I move to approve Resolution number 3958, rescinding Resolution number 3912, and approving Federal Home Investment Partnerships Program, year 2020, and prior year's annual work plan and allocation amendment.
Thank you, and we'll do one at a time. There's been a motion, is there anybody that would second that?
Serrano will second that.
Mr. Serrano will second that? And all those in favor for the first motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Barajas, go ahead with motion number two, please.
Motion number two, I move to approve Resolution number 3959, amending the CDBG program, year 2019, annual action plan for CDBGCV supplemental funding in response to COVID-19.
Okay, there's been a motion, there's seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor of motion number two, signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Barajas?
Okay, now, motion number three, I move to approve Resolution number 3960, adopting updated and amended citizen participation plan for COVID-19.
This is Councilmember Maloney, I second that.
Seconded by Mr. Maloney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? The motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. So with that, if there's no further comments, I'm gonna adjourn the special meeting for tonight. And then, I'll reopen the special meeting, and we have already been through the roll call and the pledge of allegiance, so we'll move right along into the regular workshop meeting for tonight. And we'll go right on to item number four, so is there any verbal reports from council members? Anybody like to share anything? I will share, I will share a little bit about, again, attending a couple of meetings throughout the week on the status of COVID-19, but I think the one that I'd like to mention tonight is the conference call we had with two of the Governor Enzies representatives, Representative Salvador, and I believe it was Nick was his name. And we had a meeting with multiple mayors and commissioners throughout the region on this side of the mountains, and got to share again the phasing approach that Governor Enzies is trying to put together to get businesses started, and sharing the concerns of our community, and unfortunately mentioning the fact that we lost a staple to our community of Cousins Restaurant, and how this is affecting everyone. And so again, we are, I don't want to say applying pressure, but we're getting the communication out to the governor to try to get this expedited as soon as possible for those businesses that can safely open up. And moving forward, we're getting calls on a daily basis on people wanting to resume, not only businesses, but, you know, just go back to the regular routine of life and getting their kids back in sports and things of that nature, which in this case is secondary. But again, I just want the public to know that we are working very, very hard to get our safety plans together, to get the governor to move a little bit more expeditiously in getting our businesses going, those businesses that can be open safely. And we hope, we hope we can continue to make progress with that. So, oh, and then another thing I just wanted to mention real quick, is I hope everybody had a wonderful Mother's Day yesterday. It's obviously a little different than what it would look like normally, but happy Mother's Day to all the beautiful mothers out there. Anybody else want to share anything? Okay, we'll move right along for items of discussion for tonight. We're gonna have an interview for Joint Housing Authority Board, position number four. Mr. Zabel, do you want to?
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a little bit of background, the Housing Authority is an entity that's a separate governmental entity, and it's a creation between, based on an agreement between the city and Franklin County. The board is comprised of five commissioners, and they act independent of the city and county however they are appointed. So two of the commissioners are appointed by Franklin County, and two, excuse me, three from the City of Pasco. One of the commissioners, Gregory Garcia, has served us a couple of terms, which is why the agreement. Greg has been on the committee representing the city very well over the last several years. There were, however, was a lot of interest, so council committee had got together and evaluated the applicants, and from that discussion, the mayor's making a recommendation of reappointment to Mr. Garcia. This would have happened, obviously, much sooner, his term termed out on January 28th, 2020, and, you know, we were hopeful of possibly being able to do interviews live as council normally does, excuse me, in person, as council normally does, we have that isolation. This happens to be only one candidate you're considering for tonight, so it's for reappointment, and we felt, let's get this position filled, and able to bring that forward to you without airing all the questions on the internet or what have you in the case of multiple interviewees. So with that, a series of questions was prepared for council, and Mr. Garcia is on line.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Zabel. Each one of the council members in their memorandums should have a copy of the Housing Authority Board, some of the questions, or they could ask questions on their own if they would like. Mr. Garcia, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your continued service to our community. We will ask you a series of questions, and I'll start with the first one, but just wanted to make sure, are you still available to ensure that you can make the meetings for this Housing Authority Board?
Yes, and I'm looking forward to it.
Perfect. So, Mr. Garcia, you were appointed to the Joint Housing Authority Board in 2012, and has served on the board for two terms now. Tell us why you're interested in continuing as a commissioner on this board.
Well, it's something that kind of fits into my family's background. My wife was raised in Housing Authority. I was raised in a, what do they call it, for the railroad, they have a housing, because my dad worked for the railroad. And I've worked here in Pasco for thirteen and a half years, I've seen homeless people, stopped by homeless people, I referred them to the Housing Authority so they could at least get some kind of housing, and it's really rewarding to watch people come in and have a home.
That's wonderful, and thank you for that. And thank you for that, Mr. Garcia. So we're gonna move on to Councilwoman Barajas, would you like to ask the next question, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Garcia, what, in your opinion, is one of the most critical housing issues facing our community at this time?
Right now, at this time, is the people paying their rent. As we all know, they're out of jobs, all the jobs are closed, they're sequestered, just like I am, and it's gonna be difficult. We're hoping that HUD will be able to release some funds for us, but it's kind of shaky right now, and I think we need to just, what we have been doing is just allowing them to stay in their home where they belong.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serrano, would you like to go next?
Can you suggest ways the city and Housing Authority could work together to provide additional housing services to our citizens?
Yeah, we could do more housing in these vacant lots that we have. We can put up apartments, just like they did on Fourth Street, Fourth Avenue. We could work together, go partnership on the cost for the property, we could get funding for the building, and I think that would be the best bet, because the county doesn't really seem to want to help us in that vein. We've tried to get housing up in Conell, and the county has refused to help us on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Councilwoman Roach.
Hi there, Mr. Garcia, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
I'm doing well, just want to say thank you for your service. I had a question just about, you know, about whether you hear from people who live in the housing, what is the, what's the way in which they are able to make it from living in housing like this to their own, purchasing their own house or renting on their own? What feedback have you gotten from residents as to how this housing model has helped them?
With the rental low, that they can save money, hopefully they're saving money, and they can purchase a house, the on payment, and they have jobs, they're working, they need to, and there is counseling that we offer for them to, how to purchase their own home.
So just as a follow-up question, have residents that you have referred to this housing, have they given you that feedback that that was helpful?
Yes, very helpful. They have a residential council that their president comes to the meetings and relays the stories to us.
That's wonderful, well, thank you again, and I'll be done.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Roach, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for offering to come and continue serving us. I mean, it's, people forget that the government is really just us, it's just our people and willing to step up and serve, and so I thank you for your service.
Well, I thank the city for hiring me as the City of Pasco Fire Chief, so I'm giving back to the community.
I appreciate the heck out of that. So let me pose a hypothetical situation for you. So if, say, a federal housing assistance agency pointed out like a substantial decline in the efficiency or effectiveness of the Housing Authority's program, what would you do as a commission member?
I'd try to get the commission, the rest of the commissioners and the CEO and her chief staff, and we'd get together and we'd find out what we could do, we'd make plans, we'd try to get around all that, get over it, and improve if we have to improve what we're doing, which we're really doing an excellent job, as far as I'm concerned. It would be, it would be a joint effort.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Milne.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Garcia, for everything you've done. So most of the good questions I would have asked are gone, but I will ask you one. So the Joint Housing Authority of the City of Pasco and Franklin County is a separate agency independent of the City of Pasco. As such, should the authority respect concerns expressed by the local government in planning and assisting assist housing, and why?
Yes, I think they should. I was brought on to the commission mainly, I replaced a person that was not willing to work for the city, whereas I was willing to work with the city, I was willing to work with the mayor, with the mayor, and so was a couple of our commissioners, but we had one that, like I said, I replaced him because he just was negative with the city, and so was the director at the time. Fortunately, when I come on board, we had a new guy, and he was actually, he just recently retired, and our chief financial officer became our CEO, and she's doing an excellent job, and she works with the community, also with Kennewick, since Richland no longer has the Housing Authority. She also... Uh, she also was willing to work with the city and the county.
All right, well, well, thank you, I do appreciate that, thanks.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Garcia, appreciate the responses. Obviously, you're well versed and uh, it seemed to be doing great in this position, so um, uh, we will get together and uh, and probably ratify it next, put it on next week's agenda. Correct? And we appreciate the, the service that you continue to provide, Mr. Garcia, and uh, just appreciate everything you do, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Okay, so next on the agenda, um, is a two thousand twenty Washington State legisla- uh, Legislative Session wrap-up. Do we, do we have Brianna on the line?
Brianna's on the line.
Wow.
So I'll introduce her real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, Brianna Murray, Vice President for Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs, is with us this evening. And Brianna and her team represent us on a daily basis in Olympia during session and uh, do a very good job representing the city. Uh, the two thousand twenty session seems like, seems like a long time ago right now. But uh, there actually were a lot of interesting twists and turns along the way. Brianna helped guide the city through uh, many, if not all of those. And she's here to kind of walk us through uh, the session, as well as give us a little bit of insight into what an upcoming special session may look like and then get us thinking about preparing for this fall and the, and the next legislative session in two thousand twenty-one. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brianna.
Hey, Brianna?
Hey, hey, thank you, Dave. Um, and John, um, I maybe lied. You asked if I knew how to share my screen and I thought I did. And now I am not seeing the button I thought I would see to bring up the PowerPoint presentation.
Uh, very good, okay, let's see here.
As he's doing that, Brianna, it's uh, very nice to hear your voice and uh, and have you with us tonight. Always appreciate what you do, I've seen you work firsthand. Um, and, and how your experience, uh, you put your experience to work out there and it just appreciated. I do see there's forty-six pages, you're gonna cut that down a little bit tonight, aren't you?
Yes, we have a um, but I will be very expeditious in going through the presentation.
Okay.
Um, once we, once we can bring it up. Um, and then yes, there's a full written report that captures everything we did this past session for your perusal on your own time.
Perfect.
Uh, Brianna, this is John again, uh, you should be able to take control, uh, to share your screen, hopefully.
I see share my webcam, I'm not seeing a share your screen button where it would typically be. The PowerPoint presentation is in the packet, um. And so if folks wanted to pull up the packet, we could um, go through the PowerPoint in that way.
Yeah, we have it, we have it right in front of us, Brianna, just so you know.
Uh, yes, just a moment, I'll bring that up here for uh, the folks at home.
I shared my webcam, so everyone should now be able to see me. If not PowerPoint. Shall I proceed forward with the PowerPoint?
I think you can go forward, Brianna, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Well, um, it's wonderful to join you all this evening. Um, my purp- the purpose of my presentation this evening is to provide you with an overview of the two thousand twenty legislative session, um, which concluded on March twelfth. So, um, we're a little bit delayed in getting you this information due to um, all of the COVID nineteen delays. Um, I'm planning to provide you an outcome of the two thousand twenty Pasco State Legislative Priorities. So as a reminder, prior to the beginning of each legislative session, you all as council establish what your legislative priorities are and that directs my work in Olympia. Um, and then we'll also spend some time talking about next steps, including some of the current discussions around a forthcoming special session. So with that, I'm going to dive right into an overview of the two thousand twenty Legislative Session, um, and slide number three. Um, so the two thousand twenty Legislative Session is a second year of the two-year legislative biennium. So as a reminder, the legislature operates on a two-year cycle. As the second year of that two-year cycle, the uh, two thousand twenty session was scheduled to last sixty days and is referred to as a short legislative session. Uh, the Democrats continue to hold the majority in both the House of Representatives and Senate. And the, and the majority of their work in a short session focuses on adopting supplemental operating capital and transportation budgets. So they're really focused on making amendments to budgets that they adopted in two thousand nineteen. Additionally, all legislation introduced in two thousand nineteen automatically carries over into two thousand twenty and additional bills are introduced. So there are a total of three thousand seven hundred and seventy-three bills considered throughout the two thousand twenty Legislative Session of those three hundred and eighty-six passed the legislature. Once the legislature finishes its work, um, the governor uh, has the option of vetoing bills as well as sections of the budget that the legislature adopted. And um, we saw the governor do that rather aggressively. Um, one thing that occurred in terms of timing was that the legislative session adjourned just as the COVID nineteen pandemic was beginning to ramp up. Um, so during the time when the legislature approved their final budgets and bills um, and when the governor had an opportunity to take action, um, we saw the, the COVID nineteen pandemic really increase. Um, and so it prompted the governor to take a lot of um, actions to veto uh, the legislature. And then we're hearing, and I'll conclude my presentation with this, oh, that a special session is very likely to respond to declining revenues as a result of the pandemic. I want to provide you with um, just a brief overview of each of the three supplemental budgets that were adopted by the legislature. So the first is the supplemental operating budget. And the operating budget funds all state agency operations. Uh, and unlike city government, the state fiscal year runs July one of two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. Um, so they're coming in, in the middle of that fiscal year, of that two-year biennium, to make amendments. At the beginning of the legislative session, the fiscal outlook for the state was extremely positive. Um, they were forecasted to receive an additional one point five billion dollars uh, in new revenue beyond what they had already budgeted. Um, however, toward the end of the legislative session, it became clear that the pandemic was going to reverse that economic outlook uh, and result more in a, a decline in revenues. Um, as a result, rather than spending um, a billion dollars or more, um, they, the final budget um, included only seven hundred and twenty-six million dollars in new expenditures and left three billion dollars in reserves. Um, to get to that seven hundred and twenty-six million dollars in new expenditures, it did require action from the governor, vetoing two hundred and thirty-five million in expenditures that the legislature had approved. Uh, the next formal revenue forecast is in the middle of June. Um, and that will provide the legislature with information about exactly how their current budget is being impacted by the pandemic. However, um, early numbers have indicated that they're uh, likely to face at least a billion dollar shortfall for just the remainder of this fiscal year. So of the seven hundred and twenty-six million in new expenditures, they will likely need to not only cut those new expenditures, but some additional money on top of that. In addition to the supplemental operating budget, the legislature adopted a supplemental capital budget. The capital budget funds um, public and nonprofit construction projects, um, excluding transportation. This is the budget that historically the city has received several different appropriations from. Um, we knew going into the two thousand twenty Legislative Session that the supplemental capital budget was going to be a very small budget. Um, and that was very much the case. Um, it was smaller than we even anticipated. The total supplemental capital budget was eighty-nine point nine million. Um, and very few communities received funding out of this budget this year um, with an average appropriation of only two hundred and fifteen thousand, um, which is incredibly low, especially when we look at historic, historically that the cities received appropriations upwards of one million dollars out of this budget. So as a supplemental year, the capital budget was extremely small. And then the third and final budget is the supplemental transportation budget. And this is where we spent a lot of our time and advocacy this past legislative session. The supplemental transportation budget um, had a four hundred and fifty-three million dollar revenue shortfall that was caused by the passage of Initiative nine seven six, which reduced car tabs to thirty dollars. Um, prior to the beginning of the legislative session, the governor had paused um, any projects that were in mid, um, had not gone to contract yet, but were planning to go to contract. Uh, and that pause had a significant impact on the City of Pasco as, as we'll um, discuss in the later presentation slides. Um, inevitably, the legislature resolved this four hundred and fifty-three million dollar shortfall and allowed um, all paused projects to proceed forward on schedule. However, they did this by um, creating a short-term fix for just the nineteen twenty-one biennium um, and created a long-term revenue shortfall for the out-years in twenty-one, twenty-three, and in twenty-three and twenty-five. So the two thousand fifteen gas tax package that they approved called Connecting Washington was once a balanced package. Um, it is now no longer balanced and they have uh, that revenue shortfall in the out-years. As we've seen, gas tax revenues decline with COVID nineteen, that shortfall is even more significant. All, the, the shortfall caused by Initiative nine seven six in the out-years as well as um, the additional shortfall that's being experienced now is putting increased pressure on the legislature to develop a transportation revenue package. And this is now the second or third year that we have heard discussions around the development of a subsequent transportation package. The Senate developed a draft uh, transportation package proposal in two thousand nineteen and throughout the two thousand twenty session, they revised and revisited that draft proposal. The House is um, behind the Senate, they have not yet developed a proposal. Um, however, they did hold public hearings this past session um, on a nine point seven cent gas tax increase in order to fund culverts. Um, and they accepted project applications from communities in order to begin developing a project list. As we move into the two thousand twenty-one Legislative Session, uh, we're anticipating that these conversations around a transportation revenue package will pick up um, in earnest. So that's a, um, an overview of the budgets that the legislature spent some time on this past Legislative Session. Um, I'm now going to transition to talking about the city-specific state legislative priorities. Um, and um, you'll remember that um, you all adopted uh, five top legislative priorities. In addition to these top priorities, you also adopted a list of support, oppose, and monitor issues um, that we pay attention to in addition to these five top priorities. Um, and then as bills are introduced, um, I flag those for city staff and we end up weighing in on dozens of different bills. Tonight's presentation is gonna focus on the five top priorities that you all, you all identified. I mean, I will say that of the amount of time we spend advocating in Olympia, um, I probably spend um, eighty to ninety percent of my, my time dedicated to these top five priorities compared to the other support, oppose, monitor list. So the first of your priorities was the Lewis Street Overpass. And just as a reminder, um, in two thousand fifteen, the city received fifteen million dollars in Connecting Washington for the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Um, of that fifteen million, um, we used a little bit of it for design and reserved thirteen point seven million dollars for construction. However, the total cost of the project was significantly more than that thirteen point seven million. The legislature directed the city to focus on securing grant funds for the remaining funds needed, um, which the city staff dedicated themselves to doing. Um, and just before the beginning of the legislative session, the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board awarded the city a four point four million dollar grant, which rounded out the final amount of funding that was needed for the Lewis Street Overpass Project. So all was looking good, um, we had finally secured all of the funding either through Connecting Washington or through grant funds. And then Initiative nine seven six passed and the governor put a pause on the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Um, additionally, the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board said in order to get that four point four million dollar grant, we needed to get the legislature to approve that grant and include it on their LEAP list. So for the two thousand twenty Legislative Session, we were asking for um, the four point four million dollar grant to be approved and for the pause on the Lewis Street Overpass Project to be removed. Uh, in, in order to accomplish that, um, we uh, testified as a city in both the House and Senate Transportation Committees. A huge thanks to the city manager for making the trip over to Olympia to testify at those public hearings. Uh, additionally, we met with Chairman Jake Fie, um, with, from the House Transportation Committee. And we worked very closely with our legislative delegation, um, specifically the sixteenth district legislators, which is where the project is located, plus Representative Matt Banky from the eighth legislative district, since he's from the tri-cities and serves on the Transportation Committee. As a result of our advocacy effort, the legislature did indeed unpause the project. Um, and they allocated four point four million dollars to the project, however, they didn't do it through the grant program. Instead, they said, never mind, you don't need to go through the grant program, we're just gonna give you the four point four million dollars directly. So rather than working with FIMCA, the city will be working with DOT to accept that four point four million dollars. Um, and the hope is that um, through this legislative action, the project should have everything that it now needs in order to proceed forward. And um, thus far, I have not heard that the uh, COVID nineteen pandemic has uh, caused any delays on that front. So, uh, that was our biggest and, and uh, top legislative priority. And I'm uh, extremely pleased to be reporting to you all that we resolved the issue and got the funding that you needed for that. The second of your legislative priorities was a capital funding request for the process water reuse facility. Um, you'll recall that the goal here is to fund improvements to expand the existing water, process water reuse facility at a total cost of forty-three million dollars over the next four years. Um, that total cost would be funded through a public-private partnership. Um, and the city's ask was that the state contribute five million dollars um, over the next several years to that public-private partnership. We knew going into this legislative session that, as I said before, the capital budget was going to be minimal. So we uh, put this request together for the two thousand twenty session, knowing that it would be a long-term, multi-year funding request. We uh, met with our legislators and, and got consistent feedback that there would be limited capital funding together, so we, rather than asking for five million dollars, filled out the funding request forms to request five hundred thousand dollars, which would uh, have funded design for the project. And we met with the ninth district legislators both before session as well as during the early weeks of legislative session. And in between that time, I think our, our legislators, as well as um, myself, became very aware of the, the extremely limited amount of capital funding available for two thousand twenty. And they had offered to advance a request for fifty thousand dollars. Um, and rather than request fifty thousand dollars And rather than request fifty thousand dollars, which wouldn't make a lot of progress on the project, we sort of collectively agreed that we would instead focus on requesting funds in twenty twenty one. So the bad news on this is that we didn't secure any funding for this project. The good news is that we got the project some good exposure and we're prepared for the twenty twenty one legislative session and to make the request in twenty twenty one. The next request that we had was around downtown revitalization. And we requested the two million dollars for wider sidewalks, pedestrian friendly access, plazas, and gathering places to revitalize downtown Pasco. Again, in requesting two million dollars, we were expecting this to be a long term, multi-year effort. And we were really hoping to build on our previous efforts that where we had secured funding for Peanuts Plaza. We met with the sixteen district legislators again before session as well as during the early weeks of session. Representative Skylar Rude agreed to champion this request, which was pivotal to us being able to secure funding. Senator Walsh and Representative Jenkin both supported Representative Rude, but he really took it on as a as a spearheading champion of the project. Through his efforts, he was able to secure four hundred thousand dollars in the House proposed supplemental capital budget. And once the House and Senate each released their proposal, they then have to make revisions to it. One of the revisions they ended up needing to make was that there was an emergency levy project that was needed in Starbuck. So they, the the only way to come up with the funding for that emergency levy project was to reduce the amount appropriated to the downtown revitalization project by fifty thousand. So the final supplemental capital budget included three hundred and fifty thousand for the downtown revitalization project rather than the original proposed four hundred thousand. I do want to note back to my earlier comment that the average project that was appropriated funding this year received two hundred and seventeen thousand. So the fact that that the city is receiving three hundred and fifty thousand for the downtown revitalization project is significant. It's more than the average community received this year and is very much reflective of the great work of the sixteenth district legislators. The next of the city's top priorities was not a funding request, but focused more on policy. And really was asking the legislature to approve legislation that would provide the city with more economic development tools. There are three different programs that the city supported and where we asked for the state to approve a new tool. The first tool is called local revitalization financing or LRF. It would have provided the city with a multi-year credit against the state sales tax to fund infrastructure that would in turn spur private development. This would have a significant impact on the state operating budget. And at the beginning of session, when revenues were looking positive, that seemed like a reasonable expenditure and request to make. With declining revenues, it's likely no longer a reasonable request to make of the legislature. The second tool that was requested was tax increment financing. You may be familiar with tax increment financing. It is allowed in most other states. And the revenue generated from future economic growth can be banked and spent on infrastructure to spur that economic growth. Because we are, because you would utilize property tax revenues to do that, tax increment financing does require an amendment to the state constitution. I will note that with declining state revenues, this option is being looked at much more closely as something to pursue in twenty twenty one and future years. And then the final tool that we looked at was the point oh nine sales tax credit for economic development. Franklin County currently receives a point oh nine sales tax credit for economic development. And that credit is scheduled to expire soon. So the request was really just to continue that program. However, legislators felt that continuing a sales tax credit program at a time when state revenues are so volatile did not make sense. So all three of these economic development tools did not advance forward and pass into law. And as I mentioned, with declining state revenues, they become increasingly challenging with the exception of tax increment financing. So efforts around tax increment financing are where we anticipate things to focus on moving forward. The final of your legislative priorities was around local control. For several years, we have now seen bills introduced that would have preempted your local decision making on land use decisions. Fortunately, we have a very strong group of legislators in the House that refer to themselves as the local government champions. And it is through their work that most of the proposals that were introduced did not pass. There was one bill that passed that will have an extremely minimal impact on the city of Pasco. It removes the ability for the city to require onsite parking for ADUs within a quarter mile of a major transit stop that receives service at least every fifteen minutes. These bills around ADUs started as wholesale preemption and would have eliminated your ability to regulate ADUs altogether. So this narrow exception to that really is a testament to our strong advocacy. As I mentioned, in addition to your top legislative priorities, you also adopt a list of support and oppose issues. And I have outlined those in the slides for you. Rather than go through each one, I want to just highlight a couple of them. And the first one is state shared revenues. The legislature has fully funded state shared revenues for now. However, during the Great Recession, when the legislature needed to make cuts to its own budgets, one of the ways that it made those cuts was by cutting city state shared revenues. So as they're now facing a significant revenue shortfall in their budget, we are very fearful that they will turn to the same state shared revenues and make cuts during a special session. And so that is top of mind for for those of us in Olympia. And just moving on to the next slide, slide nineteen, I just want to highlight that two additional basic law enforcement academy courses were funded in the in this budget. That was a new expenditure that was made. That is a new expenditure that's not likely to be reduced in a special session and is likely to be honored and carried out. There was also a bill that provided the city with the authority to pursue annexations via an interlocal agreement between the city and county. This is a significant new authority that could assist the city in annexing unincorporated islands if of interest in future years. So next steps, I'm on the second to last slide here. And as I mentioned, a special session is likely. We will see a state revenue forecast in June. I know legislators are also anxiously awaiting clarity on what type of federal funding is going to be provided. If the governor does does choose to call a special session, it lasts for thirty days or until the legislature adjourns themselves. During a legislative session, there is a campaign freeze. And you'll know on the slide that in November of twenty twenty, all members of the House of Representatives and half the members of the Senate are up for reelection. So both parties have a strong motivation to conclude a special session in a very succinct and timely manner. And we're talking about them coming in, taking action in a matter of days rather than in weeks. We also are aware that they're exploring virtual formats for a special session, so they would not, they would not necessarily be traveling to Olympia in order to take action. And we have heard from leadership that they will likely focus on making changes to their budget and then one or two other other bills in addition to that. In preparation for a special session, the Association of Washington Cities has developed a list of special session priorities that includes protecting state shared revenues. And our specific work, we have scheduled briefings with the eighth, ninth, and sixteenth district legislators to make them aware of the city's fiscal situation and the importance of state shared revenues. So in the coming month, we will be doing those briefings to prepare. It's possible that a special session will not occur. It seems extremely likely at this point, but if the June revenue forecast is more positive, they could choose to delay it. Regardless of whether there's a special session come January eleventh, twenty twenty one, the twenty twenty one legislative session will begin and it will be the first year of another two year cycle. And so we will be, in addition to working through a special session, preparing for that twenty twenty one session. So I'm happy to answer anything that you might have questions about from this past session or about a forthcoming special session. I think most of you know that I am expecting my first child later this summer. So on the final slide, I have included the contact information, not only for myself, but for my entire Gordon Thomas Hinnewell team, because they will be backfilling for me through the months of July and August. But until July first, you've got me and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much, Brianna. I sure appreciate everything you do. And any, anybody have any questions for Brianna? Well, that was a very thorough report and you know, we, I think with the situation we're in, it's almost like never know really what to expect. Mr. Zabel, do you have any, any comments for Brianna?
Well, I just want to thank Brianna for her great work. We're very well served by by her and her team and you know, she's kept us up to date on things as they've transpired throughout the whole COVID crisis as well. So we really appreciate the work on Brianna's part. And she does a great job with our council when we're there as well as when staff goes over. Their team does a good job getting us prepared for hearings and so forth.
Well, Brianna, thank you very much and good luck to you and your new baby coming up.
Mayor Martinez, may I interrupt for just one minute and say something?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say one congratulations, Brianna, on your first baby. That is so exciting. Hope you enjoy all that's about to come. But it was really nice to meet you in January and thank you for showing me the ropes. I enjoyed my lobby days with you and I wanted to just say that on Saturday or Sunday this weekend, I was with my family coming back from Sacramento Park and we went, we were about to go under the Lewis Street overpass as the train was going over the Lewis Street overpass, which as you might know, is a little bit dangerous at this time. So just want to say thanks on behalf of all Pasco residents for your hard work and your effort on that. That was really important money to to have to repair that particular project. So thanks again.
Well, my pleasure. And I I just want to also say that it really is a team effort to be effective in Olympia. You guys, despite, you know, revenue shortfalls and everything, had a great legislative session with both Lewis Street overpass and the downtown revitalization project. And if it weren't for a really dedicated city manager and responsive city staff and an engaged council that's willing to come over to Olympia, it wouldn't happen. So I'm happy to contribute to the team, but it it really is a group effort. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I tried to speak up earlier, but I was on mute. So my my apologies for technical technological failing I have. So Brianna, I do have a couple of questions and it's always a pleasure to hear from you and and I mean, I've been going to Olympia now for, gosh, six or seven years in a row. And it's just been, it's it's amazing to see how the beast works and 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 it's certainly an art. That's more than the science for for all the work you do. But so my question for you is 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 two kind of related questions. So one, how do we advocate for ourselves ourselves during this potential special session, especially ahead of any potential session? And related, should we develop and approve a specific legislative priority list for this? Or is this just going to be all out warfare, just hope for the best, call it every favor we got?
Great question. And so I think that your current legislative agenda in support of post-monitor list provides the direction that's really needed to to weigh in on the things that will be discussed in a special session. The scope of issues that the legislature is going to tackle in a special session is going to be extremely narrow. I mean, you guys have protecting state shared revenues, honoring local control, defending against unfunded mandates already on your approved legislative agenda. You also have identified as a top priority economic development tools. So if there's any discussion around economic recovery, you've you've provided direction on that front as well. So I don't know that you all need to adopt a dedicated legislative agenda to a special session, given the narrow number of issues that will be covered. As far as how we advocate in a special session, it is very important that we get in front of legislators prior to a special session being convened, which is why I've worked with the the city manager to schedule briefings with our our legislative delegation. And it's through those briefings that I think we're going to get the most meaningful dialogue. In addition to that, I'm working very closely with the local government champions that I that I referenced. They were very helpful this last session in protecting against local local control. And I think they're prepared and willing to take on the fiscal issues that we're likely to be facing. So you may be hearing from me more around work with those local government champions and their communication with legislative leadership. But I I'm thinking you all have given me via your current legislative agenda some really good direction. And I'll focus on carrying that out as we move into a special session.
So Brianna, we we found that, as you mentioned earlier, the the council, we have a, we have a very active city council in terms of our legislative engagement. I guess I just want to, I'll make a statement rather than ask a question. I believe you know, we're 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 happy to do some work to try to keep these things moving forward. So if there's any calls we need to make, any, any emails we need to write, you know, I I will just speak for myself. I'll be personally very happy to to engage in whatever way you see I can be most beneficial.
Absolutely. And I think it there will be a window of time where those types of actions will be important. I think at this point, we're waiting for the June revenue forecast to really know what it is we need to be asking for. And and once we have that direction, I will call on all of you.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
All right. And thank you, Mr. Maloney, for that work you've done over there and for the willingness for anybody to go over there, all of us to go over there and do what we got to do. Well, thank you once again, Brianna. Good luck to you and appreciate appreciate your service.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move right along over to our next item. And that will be a comprehensive plan environmental impact statement. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And this item, after a really sustained effort, this item involves the schedule for the release of the environmental impact statement related to our comprehensive plan. And in particular, the three alternatives associated with our urban growth area. And I'm sure council is well aware, we're continuing to work and fine tune even today and tomorrow on adjustments to the transportation analysis, which has proven to be the most complicated element to be involved with. As as council knows, it involves coordination with the Washington State Department of Transportation and the Council of Governments and tends to be tends to have far reaching impacts and effects due to the expensive nature of transportation improvements in the twenty year planning horizon. But we think that by the end of the week, we'll be able to distribute the environmental impact statement for public comments and start the thirty day review process associated with that draft EIS. As you can see, the agenda report contains a schedule of the major milestones coming up for Action on the comprehensive plan. There's also attached to the agenda report, a table that shows a summary. Of how the three alternatives in the environmental impact statement address the goals of the Growth Management Act. So. And I can provide a much more detailed schedule of council wishes, but we're putting some fine tuning on that as well. But. Next week at the planning commission meeting, we'll be having a presentation. On the comprehensive plan and urban growth area. And then we anticipate a similar presentation to council at the first workshop in June. We don't want to get too far ahead of the public process associated with the EIS. But we'll likely be asking council for an item to be considered at a special meeting. On the June twenty-second date, so we can be certain and get this to Franklin County in time to wrap it up by the end of September. So again, Mr. Mayor, very long process. You'll be getting a link or, and, and physical copies, if you like, of the EIS. There's a ton of information, policies and goals in particular. As well as data and possible projections for projects needed to accommodate. The next forty-eight thousand Pasco residents by the year, well, by eight, nineteen years now from, used to be twenty, nineteen years now. And we'll take it from there.
Well, thank you, Mr. White. Anybody have any comments? I just, I can already see Pete's brain just going crazy out there. Mr. Serrano, you got any comments?
As of right now, surprisingly, no. My brain is going to be on wait and see mode. I'm, I'm excited to see this thing move forward. I see the timeline and I, I recognize there will be critical decisions both by us and. The planning commission and the opportunity to hear our public comments. So. I guarantee there's going to be a slew of questions as those processes move forward, but thank you for now on laying this out.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments for Mr. White?
This is Councilmember Alvarado. Uh, yeah, just. It's good to just continue to see this progress move forward. This is certainly a long one. And one that we've been anticipating quite a bit, but I certainly, certainly good to see. Just this, this, uh, this process moving forward. I'm looking forward to just being able to really dive deep into this.
All right, perfect. Mr. White, thank you for your effort and for all the work that's being done on this. If there's no further comment.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one, this is Councilmember Maloney. I just, I do have one question for Mr. White.
Go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
So, Mr. White. Thank you. Mr. White, what feedback do you think that we've received that may not have, that we may not have fully. Satisfied the interested parties? Obviously, we've got a lot of conflicting and. Competing. Input from some of our, from some stakeholders. Do we, do we feel like there's any, any big? Missing spots? Do you understand what I'm asking there, Mr. White?
I, I think I do. I know of maybe three or possibly four parties that are interested in. The urban area in particular, we, we, with the third alternative. And Mr. Maloney, you're probably very well aware that when we first started with forty-eight hundred acre expansion, you asked some. Hard questions about how much of that was needed, given our. Potential or our propensity towards the low-density classification of land uses. With the third alternative, which takes forty-eight hundred acres and reduces it to about thirty-four hundred acres. Of course, there were some people that either had their property removed from the urban boundaries. Or some of it was partially removed. And I think you might get some of those comments. There are a handful, maybe two or three parties that are interested in. Land use in the proposed urban areas. Maybe not liking, for example, the intended designation. And you might hear some of that, although I think that's an easier. It's a much easier issue to address in coming years, as we recognize this is a twenty-year effort. In coming years, as it would be to address now, because we're in control of land use decisions. The, this year's cycle has, of course, the urban boundaries and we're not in control of that. As the agenda report noted. That's a decision ultimately decided by Franklin County. And my hope is that we can get that decision. Knowing that we will definitely be back in the next year to address issues that come up with. Possibly half a dozen different ownership parties.
Great. Thank you for that. The follow-up question I'd have for you is, we know that we've had some interested environmental groups in. Neighboring cities and communities. Do we feel like we've addressed any comments we've received there as adequately as we can?
Yes. One, one group submitted a very detailed letter back when we had their scoping process and we've been in contact with them. Actually fairly often. We invited their new director to Pasco for a conversation. Wanted to update the new director on some of the code amendments that council has been considering the past year and a half or so. So I, I think we've done as best we can at this point without knowing what their comments may be on the EIS. I think we've done a. A passable job at least.
Mr. White, I have no, no qualms or questions about the quality of your work. I just simply am looking for some, some heads up as to who we're going to be hearing from and. And how, how vocal some of those interested parties may be. So thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Maloney. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. White, for that. Moving right along to. Our administrative and community services reorganization. Mr. Radkai, a pretty exciting times for you.
Yeah, certainly exciting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Over the last year and a half, the Administrative and Community Services Department. Has been working on a reorganization plan for the staffing of its parks. Forestry and facilities division in order to meet the rising year-round need for staff support of the city's growing inventory of parks and facilities. This plan reduces the number of seasonal employees historically hired during the peak growing season. And converting a portion of those dollars allocated to seasonal salaries to hiring an additional seven full-time employees. This proposed shift in resource, this prefers, excuse me. This proposed shift in resources right sizes our staffing capability with the needs. Of the current parks and facilities inventory and provides more modern approach to employment practices. For the ACS department and the maintenance of our city facilities. The addition of five mid-level positions and two entry-level positions. Would also provide more support for the maintenance and repair of parks, grounds and facilities on a year-round basis. So in a sense, providing more onsite support when it's not during the growing season. Historically, the department's reliance on seasonal labor has meant that during the non-growing season, we had minimal staff on hand. Without having the ability to address growing repair needs during the winter months. In essence, this change will provide for more efficient maintenance of current assets. As well as enhanced ability to address one-time issues that may be encountered by any park or city facility throughout the year. Financially, because this allocation of funding for seven new full-time employees is taken from our current allotment of seasonal employee salaries. This will not require a general fund budget increase and is in fact projected to reduce costs immediately and over the foreseeable future. The overall goal in this reorganization is to provide comprehensive coverage to city facilities. Efficient delivery of services year-round and the accountability and increase and maintain our accountability to the community. Therefore, the item brought before you tonight is a request to increase the headcount of full-time city staff by seven employees. Which is a process typically done during the yearly annual budget amendments. But since this is not coupled with a budget request, we are just here to request the increase to the headcount. I am now willing to take any questions of council that might be out there.
Thank you, Mr. Radkai. Anybody in the council have any questions? For Mr. Radkai? I, I for one, just reviewing the report here, find it very interesting and exciting that we can actually increase. The, the full-time employees and not have to, and, and we're going to save money in the process. Which is really exciting. It's going to be interesting to see how that really works, because you know, during the time when. You know, the busy season. Having, because ultimately we'll have less people. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. This approach still allows us with enough budget room to hire up to sixteen seasonal employees for the growing season. To really meet that increased needs when our parks and irrigation are on and growing and weed control is needed. And. If you looked around town, that's something that we're really trying to focus on.
And when, when is this actually going to start?
This could start as early as next week.
And do we have any concerns about, although you, you know, you did mention that it's not going to affect the budget, but is there any concerns with? What we're running into now with potential budget shortages at the end of the year? I know you can't, you don't have a crystal ball, but what?
I, yeah. I, I don't have a crystal ball and I don't know if city manager Zabel could.
I think the proposal is, is this is cost, pretty cost neutral. Matter of fact, it will result in a bit of a savings. And we can manage the seasonals.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'll definitely be in favor of this. Is this something? Anybody, well, let, let me ask the council. Anybody else have any comments or questions for Mr. Radkai?
Uh, this is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have a, I guess unrelated, but I guess related question. I do notice that there's parts of the city that have not been maintained, like landing strips and things of that nature. And, and I'm assuming that's because of, you know, the non-essential aspect of some of those issues. If, if this goes into effect, will we have the resources available to kind of bring that back onboard, those services?
Yes, and let me take a step back with the non-essential aspects. When the first. COVID-related restrictions were put in place, the ACS department, parks and facilities shifted into really maintaining what was essential. And what was really doing the minimum to prevent any loss of vegetation, but not necessarily maintaining an active. Mowing schedule. We are picking that up. And the initial part of the COVID crisis, a portion of the facility staff did get redeployed to help out public works operations. And so our focus was mainly put into maintaining city facilities for the safety of the employees that remain on site. As well as our first responders and helping public works in their charge on that. So now that we're able to redeploy some folks back to the parks area. And then start staffing up with additional staff members, including the additional hiring of our normal seasonal crew. Please, I would, I would tell council and the community to expect to see market improvements over the next couple of weeks in our parks, streets and boulevards.
Thank you, Mr. Radkai. Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, looking forward to see that in next week's agenda. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda is the professional services agreement for PACE engineering. Mr. Wardley, is Mr. Wardley on the line or? Thanks for.
Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you for holding on. Go ahead, Steve.
You bet. I'm going to do a, just a real quick introduction, the last two items on tonight's agenda, and then I'm going to turn it over to. Our CIP manager, Maria Sarah, to go over the details for you. But just as an overview to start, the council members may remember that. Hired. Pace engineers. Uh-oh, can you hear me? Back in twenty seventeen to provide some engineering services related to the reuse facility. And as part of that effort, we entered into two different contracts with them. The first contract was related to development of a facility plan for the reuse facility, because there needed to be some improvements. And there was also part of that same contract, a design for the new irrigation pump station, which we knew was in immediate need of. Needing to be replaced. The second contract we entered into is to have them design the Columbia East Lift Station and Force Main Project. And so those are the two contracts that are the last two items on your agenda. And so with that. I would like to turn it over to Maria to go into the details of each of them and hopefully. Her camera and audio is working just fine. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Wardley.
Good evening. This is Maria. Can you hear me?
Hello, Maria. I can hear you.
Good evening. So I, I am not sure how to make my camera work. If you are a bit, I would just continue to do the presentation without my camera.
Probably the best thing to do is the agenda report, the information in it.
I see my camera.
There you are.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are going to talk about the first agenda item for public work today. And that is the amendment to pay faces contract or professional services adrena. For the facility plan and IPS or PWRA. This amendment comes as the. Response to a couple of unexpected items that were added to the scope of work. The first one. Has to do with the facility plan. And it was additional coordination meetings and additional. Iterations and responses to ecology where, with our oversight agency. These modifications to the draft plan were addressed in a timely manner to allow us. To be considered for grant funding. Additionally, this PSA covers the design and construction support. For IPS, which is the irrigation pump station, which is vital for the functioning of that facility. Since it takes the pre-treated wastewater towards the field where it is land applied and treated and disposed. And as part of this amendment, we are including some additional work that had to do with redesign. Of two inflow pipes into the IPS. That needed adjustment after the original design and then the extension of one of those pipes. Towards the fields that needed to be upside. All the detail on how the amendment applies to each of those projects is shown in the agenda report.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Ms. Sarah, I have a question for you. I guess fundamentally, when I'm looking at this. Additional scope of work here, is, is all the money already spent? It looks like the dates I'm seeing are all in the past.
Most of them are spent. Especially the ones that had to do with the facility plan. The facility plan obtained approval at the end of last year. According with, in accordance with the timeline for our grant application to be eligible for our. It was a loan application.
So of this amendment number six here, how much, how much money is left to be spent?
I can tell you that. It would be. Mainly task number three and task number four shown in the, in the scope of work. And that is approximately. Nine thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. So of the sixty, let's see, of the sixty-six thousand dollars, we've got about. About nine of it left. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the additional information. Thank you. I appreciate the additional information.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Sarah. Any other questions from council? All right. If there's no other questions or comments, so do you want to share the next one as well, Mrs. Sarah?
Yes, I will continue with the next one.
Okay.
Okay, so our next item in the agenda is the professional services agreement amendment for PACE's design and construction support work for Columbia East Forest Main and Pump Station. This contract included the design and construction services for construction support services, I believe, for this pump station and force main. And it also includes right-of-way acquisition efforts performed through a staff consultant to pay. As you know, we've had some challenges in the right-of-way acquisition for this project. This is a, I'm going to, I'm going to step back and talk about the lift station. The lift station was designed and constructed with, with, in a very timely manner with minimal changes. But the force main, the five-mile force main going from the lift station that is located in the, at the intersection of Pasco Caloros Highway and Capro Avenue and goes all the way to the PWRF facility. And it, it was originally planned to go mainly through private property. And due to challenges in the acquisition of land, it had to be realigned several times, rerouting this pipeline until where we are right now, where we have found a viable location with less resistance from property owners to grant those leases. As part of this amendment, we are addressing the additional work that is required in order to perform those acquisitions, additional negotiations that we've had to perform, and we're still performing an additional documentation needed plus rework of our design plans and legal descriptions that allow for the acquisition. Plus incorporating an allowance for construction support from the engineering engineer of record for RFI, so responses to questions and bidding support.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Sarah on, on, on the second item here? Wonderful. Well, if there's no questions, we thank you, Maria, for that report and Mr. Wardley, thank you for the effort and the work we're putting into this. We're looking forward to seeing those two on next week's agenda. So next we go to miscellaneous council discussion. Anybody have any miscellaneous discussion they'd like to share?
Yes, Mayor, this is Councilman David Milney. I just wanted to say my condolences to, we lost a great Pasco teacher last, this last week to a fire accident, Jeffrey Dean Hannan. He was a good friend of mine and constituents and just want to say my heart goes out to all the Pasco students and teachers that knew him well. He was just a great guy and somebody that I'll definitely miss.
Thank you for that, Mr. Milne. Yeah, my son was his coworker and I did hear about that. And also Mrs. Superintendent Whitney shared that as well. And so our heart goes out to, to the family and then to the whole school district staff that, that knew him and worked with him. Thank you for that, Mr. Milne. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
So my wife and I have been in some close contact with a couple of our local vendors. We've been doing some donations over the last week. And, you know, we're down, talking with Vinnie's Bakery, talking to Vinnie there. He's, you know, like many businesses, he's, he's struggling a little bit in these hard times. And I, and I would just like to say, you know, it's, it's amazing all the, the, the hard work these, these small businesses are doing. I'm so glad that we have an opportunity to try moving some money forward. I really hope we have an opportunity to do whatever more we can to support. I know that, I know that I've talked to Mr. Zabel about some of our, some of the potential efforts here. And I'm really hoping that we can do whatever we can as, as a city, but also encourage everyone individually. If you have the resource to do so, maybe this is a time dig to get some to-go orders from some of your favorite places, places that you know you really want to be there when you're, when, when things are returning more to normal. So there's, there's a lot of support that we each individually can give as well as, as a, as a city. So I just want to encourage everyone that to, to think of a small business and do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Maloney. I appreciate that very much. Mr. Zabel, you have anything else you want to share?
I do have just a few things. I want to touch on Councilmember Maloney's comment as well. So there, there isn't a lot of significant operational items related to COVID that I, that I necessarily want to report tonight. You know, we continue working on it, communicating with the governor's office, assisting the mayors and getting them a written communication out last week. I think that actually went out today. But as well as PSA last week as well for the four mayors. But I wanted to kind of kick a bit of a dialogue off on financial impacts. The pandemic and, and its mitigation has had, and then talk a little bit about the CARES funding. I think council heard a week or so ago that we were going to receive as much as 2.3 million dollars through what's called local CARES. And there is some, some degree of flexibility with that funds, with those funds. Certainly they're intended to impact, impacts for local government, but I think there also are some things we can do out in the community as well. Like our businesses, though, the city's been hit pretty hard, done some preliminary estimates and primarily in the general fund and the general fund being the most vulnerable right now. And it's also the fund that funds some of our services that are most vulnerable citizens rely on, police, fire, parks and recreation, street subsidy, those kind of things. And some of the areas we've been hit, obviously, as sales are taxed, sales are down, sales tax is down. Public safety tax is down, criminal justice tax is down. Gambling tax is basically not exist, existing right now, hotel motel and tourism-related revenues really, really taking a hit, as well as fuel tax, which will impact our street department, which is going to have a requirement for us to probably be looking at subsidizing that out of a general fund that's already losing money. One of the other partnerships, I, I thought of it tonight while we were talking about the Housing Authority, another partnership we have with the county is the Happo Center. And with nobody going to the Happo Center, our subsidy is going to increase there. Now, of course, operating costs are down, but there's still fixed costs there. So our subsidy is most likely going to increase. And then, of course, we all heard Brianna talking about state shared revenues. That's been a concern since this hit. And she's right, that's one of the first places that the legislature looks when they, when they start to try to fill a gap in their own operating fund. And, and we're going to hear a report in June on, on the impacts to the state. And reason being is because the reporting on those things lag a couple of months. And so they don't really know much yet. But we'll, we'll, we'll find out pretty quickly, right before the legislature goes into section. So we're looking at a revenue shortfall, probably we're estimating for the biennium. And this is, this is taken into account that we were ahead of the game before all this started. So we're, we're doing pretty well with respect to budget, but to make budget, we're looking at revenue shortfalls of between three million to 5.2 million in the general fund. And as Finance Director shared with you before, and I've shared with you as well, we do thankfully have reserves. You know, 5.2 million dollars or three, three million dollars take a pretty big bite out of them, but we do have reserves. And that, that puts us in a, in a little bit better spot than most. And as we heard from some of the letters tonight, it probably puts us in a better spot than a lot of our businesses we're trying to help and that we're thinking of as well. So it, it's a balance. There's a lot in flux with regard to the funding. One of the things we don't want to do is get our, get ourselves in a position of, of distributing federal dollars out and then finding we did it in error and wind up having to pay them back and then compound our problem. And so we're, the CARES funding is going to be administered by the State Department of Commerce. And we should be getting a authorization letter, I, I believe, May 22nd or May 24th. And followed up typically, if it, if it operates like we, we do other programs through commerce, next few weeks we'll be working on contracts with them. And right now, there is, there is some ambiguity. You heard Brick White talk about it earlier as far as CBDG funds and during his presentation. There's a lot of conflicting information in some of the, some of the materials we're getting on the use of those funds. And so even, even the webinars that they've held, Finance Directors attended multiple ones, her and her staff. And, and we've heard things that conflict with the written materials discussed as allowable and vice versa. And conflicts in what different presenters are saying from the agencies that are administering the funds. So I think it's one of those things that a lot of programs and a lot of, a lot of money is getting rolled out in a very short period of time. It's going to take, you know, probably a few weeks to kind of get things sorted out in a way where we're confident going forward. But I, but I want to assure the council that we're, we'll bring you together a package of, in the next few weeks, bring you, bring you together, do the best we can to bring you a better, together a package of potential and possibilities for council to consider as well as some, make sure our numbers are nailed down and bring you that as well in terms of allowable expenses. Right now, on an expense side, I think the city is, I, I want to say we're about half a million dollars in salaries, just to date, COVID-related salaries. Some of those may be reimbursable under the guidelines of the CARES mitigation funds. Some may not be. And then we, we project that'll be, that number will climb to about a million by the time it gets to the end of the year. And then the 470,000, we have about 470,000 projected in additional non-labor costs. And part of that labor cost is, you know, we talked a little bit about the federally mandated emergency sick leaves and federally mandated additional FMLA for, for childcare. So those are great benefits to people to help them through a time of crisis. But the money that's coming with them or, isn't coming directly as a reimbursement to the city. It's coming through something like the CARES package or whatever. But in the meantime, this taxpayer as a Pasco are footing that bill. So trying to get all this sorted out the best we can for you so we can give you good information you can rely on and making decisions going forward. So I hope, Councilmember Maloney, that answers your question. And I know Councilmember Roach and, and others have, have had some similar questions via email as well. So that's the best I can give you tonight.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Dave. You know, I've been in public service for many years. And this is the, I've always been an advocate of, of having that reserve, you know, five to 10% reserve. And I've never ever had to use it. And it just unfortunate that this is probably the first time we have to dip into that to make sure that, that we stay, that we stay good. So anyway, we're looking forward to, to what you're going to bring us later on. Anybody have any comments for Dave?
Mr. Zabel, this is Councilwoman Roach. Just want to say you're doing a great job and thank you for your just consistently prompt responses to emails and questions and for information. So thanks again.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Anybody else? All right. If there's nobody else, then there is no need for an executive session tonight. So we're moving to number eight and we will now, will, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.